Okay, when was that, Julie?
Was mu- was last night.
So, the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, so that was why I didn't make it to the.
Oh, the open house?
House.
Spec, so this will do C. Spec meeting, oh sure. Spec meeting, gonna add C. And I think I have an enrollment report here.
That was a big sleep out.
I have one if you go.
Whoop, I got one. And you've got Operations Security, right?
Yep.
And I just did those today, so.
Good afternoon, and welcome to today's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, November twenty-six, two thousand nineteen. Roll call is Mike Edman and Mari Myron are absent. Can you have a quorum? Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November twelfth meeting.
Second.
Okay, got Dan?
I don't think you need to mess with it.
Dan and Julie, okay.
Okay, all of us in favor say aye.
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 And agenda, we have a couple changes to note. Julie will be doing personnel, and we have a special guest, Jason Seibert. Well, not quite yet. And we also have an addition of a meeting board report spec meeting. With those changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve with the amendments.
Okay.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Jason. We have Jason Seibert here to speak about the world's big sleep out.
Yeah, thanks for having us. When we were at the Blandon Conference here a couple of weeks ago, probably close to a month ago, there was, you know, twenty-three people from our community, and we worked on these nine different areas of a healthy community. And one of the things that came forward was the need for emergency crisis housing for children and adults that are misplaced, they're not able to stay in their home for whatever reason. And it was a common thing that came up multiple times, and there was a number of people that were pretty passionate about that with Anna Garbers with Human Services, and Women of Today, and the Sheriff's Department, and Toni Fink with the pastor. And so this issue was something that was talked about a number of different times. And there was definitely shared meaning that in our community, that's an opportunity. And so December seventh is actually an international, it's the first time this is being done. It's an international event, it's called the World's Big Sleepout. And on December seventh, they hope to have fifty thousand people sleeping outside that night. And there's fifty iconic cities around the world. Two of them in the United States of New York with Times Square, Millennial Park in Chicago are hosting sleep out events. And this is the world's largest display of solidarity and support for people experiencing homelessness. And here in Martin County, you know, there's, we formulated a team last Friday. We made the decision to formulate a team to work on this and to join this event that's going on. You'll see international news on it as we get closer to the date. Some of the A-lister people from the United States are like Will Smith is a huge advocate for this and working on homelessness. And so half the money that we raise actually will go to an international effort. And half the money stays here will actually go to the Salvation Army here in Fairmont. And that's really to work on emergency crisis housing. And for us to actually take a step forward to have a unified effort. Because right now, there's lots of little silos of people working on that and organizations that are working on it. But if the Sheriff's Department ends up with somebody today that needs help, there isn't really a protocol of what they can do to help with that. And so what we want to do is make one step forward in getting recognition that this is a community issue. And when it comes to the school board, you know, we've got some great folks. Kate Collinsbox on board, she's gonna be sleeping outside on December seventh, made that commitment. Chris Seifert from the CER office. Now, Chris can't sleep in anything other than her bed, but she is sleeping in a sleeping bag outside that night and made that commitment. And, you know, it's a great opportunity for people, anybody can join the group. And if you go to theworldsbigsleepout.com, you'll see more information about it. And we also, we have a Facebook page that's starting tomorrow, it's called Fairmont's Big Sleepout. So we'll be doing that in Citizens Park here on the night of December seventh, it's a Saturday night. And so it's a great time for us, you know, especially with Thanksgiving being here, is to look for opportunities to serve others and do good things for others. And this is one. And so we have some good folks from the school district that are jumping in and are being part of the group. And we invite anybody else. And on our Facebook page that'll start tomorrow, there is a link for people to be able to be involved if they want to donate or even, we encourage people even to stop by Citizens Park that night and interact with the group that will be sleeping out and giving up their homes for one night to experience something different, so, yeah.
So Jason, if someone doesn't use Facebook, how can they get more information?
Yeah, great question. So if somebody's looking for more information, so there's a number of different places that we're gonna have information. The Quanix Pancake Feed is, I believe, is coming up. So, you know, we're a small but mighty group that's just kind of formulating and the clock's ticking. And we kind of joke around, because Adam Hens, he's one of the guys that was with Blandon, and he kind of joked and said, "Well, folks, if we would have committed to this six months ago, we still would have just started working on it this week anyway." So, if they want more information, there's gonna be information on, you know, CER, you can get information about it. And, you know, we have a couple of other things that we're trying to do right now to get more information out to people. But they can get information, CER, City Hall has more information about it as well. So if people wanna, and they can always contact me directly too at the Holiday Inn. I'd be happy to help them. I've had a couple of people call today, we were at City Council meeting last night. So like Doug Hartstead from the city here, he's gonna join us, and he's excited. And his son is actually gonna join us that night too. So, yeah, it's kind of a fun opportunity to do something for others.
And the central gathering place for this is?
Is Citizens Park, right here.
Okay.
So, and the bathrooms and the lobby area by the elevator here at City Hall will be open. There'll be a couple of burn barrels out, and what we're allowed to have is either a tarp and a sleeping bag. And because we're in Minnesota and the northern climate, an appliance box is acceptable.
And any registration to sleep in the park?
It's not, you know, we got the permit approved last night, so you don't necessarily have to register. And if you actually went to the world'sbiggestsleepout.com, you can actually do this outside. You can host your own event at your own house even. So it's not required that you go anywhere, you don't have to pay a registration fee or anything like that. Again, this is a movement of people just showing their support for the efforts that go into people that can't stay in their home or don't have a safe place to be, so.
And there will be, so part of this is an effort to raise some funds?
Yep, is to raise some funds. So so far, we have, you know, two thousand dollars committed. And, you know, tomorrow on our Facebook page, again, Fairmont's Big Sleepout Facebook page, there'll be a link on how people can actually donate. And again, fifty percent of the funds go to the international efforts for homelessness. And there's three organizations that they go to. And fifty percent of the funds go to the Fairmont Salvation Army earmarked for the crisis housing.
Okay, very good.
Hey, Jason, while you're here, I want to publicly thank you for advocating for the Pro Start program.
Yeah.
You started, you put that bug in our ear about two years ago, I think.
Yeah.
And we're very pleased to report that that's going. And the Pro Start program, the Culinary Arts Program, did a great job when the Minnesota Supreme Court was here. They worked with a cup and saucer, and they actually developed and did the menu and provided the lunch for the Supreme Court. And the kids were a big hit. But I want to thank you for advocating for that two years ago. As you know, sometimes it takes time to get things done, but.
I know that.
We, we. We appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I, I'm looking forward to getting a chance to met with Mrs. Garbers and getting a chance to work with them more. And, yeah, so we are definitely a key stakeholder in hospitality here in Fairmont and look forward to working with more students on it, so.
You bet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Oh, one more thing.
Jason, not gonna let you go just yet. Oh, then, who wants to go first?
You go ahead, but if you're asking the same question, then I'll pass. But I did have another question as to the world's biggest sleep out.
Sure, go, yeah, go for it.
Well, my question is, you mentioned that there really is no policy, or, you know, who's working on that then? That, you know, if we do have teenagers or families that are homeless and that, and they do get into our social service network and that, who's working on what happens to them?
Yeah, great, great question. I don't necessarily have an answer for that.
But is that in the works then, in Martin County and/or this region, or?
And I think those situations are so different. The thing that I found, it was really interesting when we were at the Blandon Group. And again, this was twenty-three people that all have different relationships with different parts of our community, whether it's Chris Gerhart from the Sheriff's Department was there, and, you know, Kate Collinsback was there, and Andy Traito was there, you know. So we had educators, you have people from all different areas that were there. And this was something that came up, but everybody had their little part of it. So we had a perspective from the Sheriff's Department, you had a perspective from an educator, you had a perspective from Anna Garbers with Human Services was there. And so, and we had Women of Today with, you know. So everybody kind of had their own perspective, but there wasn't like a one-stop shop. So if we have somebody that needs help, there isn't a unified protocol for doing that. And that's a big opportunity for us. And this is one step in the journey to help with that. But it is something that helps put it in the forefront, that we do have to have a protocol so there is an easier way for people to be able to help people.
Right, you know, so like, you know, so we don't have anything in place right now, is what you're saying, correct?
Well, there's silos. And so, you know, if somebody goes to an area church, they might get help with lodging, or they might help with them paying for a hotel room for one night or whatnot. Or if they went to the Salvation Army, there's silos of help and support. But as Anna Garber said from Human Services, a lot of times, there's other reasons why there is homelessness or displacement. And sometimes the person helping isn't aware of what other resources are available to help that person.
Well, sometimes they're just down and out, and they just aren't even able to even think about what's happening the next day.
Yeah, and some of these situations too, and I mean, California is a perfect example. There's a lot of homeless people because they weren't able to stay in their homes because of fires. And that's still, that's a homelessness issue, you're right. That's a crisis that goes on, but then what happens? What happens next for those people that need some help and support? And so those are things that, you know, and I can tell you, being in the lodging business, you know, it's a weekly thing. You know, it's certainly a Martin County issue. This is, when we talk about homelessness, we don't necessarily walk past people who are homeless on the street here in Fairmont, especially on a night like tonight. However, these crisis situations are happening on a weekly basis. So they're real, and they're right here, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Shall I say it's fortuitous timing that you're gonna be doing this on December seventh? Because that happens to be the day that we do our KSUM Camp for Kids to pick up the food donations that day. And I just wanted to invite you to, you know, please come by once or twice Thursday or Friday morning to come on the radio and tell everybody about that so we can spread the word. Because it's a great idea and a great event. It's been a while since we've had anybody camp, so we'll make you the campers.
Yeah, there you go. Well, one of the things that's actually impressive, the gentleman that started this five years ago in Scotland had a little eatery the size of Edees here, and he would feed homeless people. And that's how it started. And last year, just in the country of Scotland, they raised ten million dollars for homeless, just in Scotland. And this is the first year the same organization has taken this to an international event. And I found out about it as Holiday Inn is a worldwide corporate sponsor. And I found out about, you know, this event through that avenue. And I said, hey, this just speaks, you know, directly to what we talked about and had shared meaning when we were up in Grand Rapids with the Blandon Group. And it's an opportunity for us to partner with that. And it's just, yeah, there's a lot of international activity that'll go along with this event, and you'll see more of it on all of the news stations coming up. And it's kind of fun to say that Fairmont's participating, and we're gonna be right there with them, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Superintendent?
Thank you, three things. First of all, the enrollment report, enrollment report, we have the exact same number of students that we'd had two weeks ago. We're up one student at the elementary, and we're down one at the high school. If you look at the calendar for the upcoming weeks, on Monday, we have, Monday, December ninth, that is, a week from Monday, FDCC will be meeting in the bedroom. And on our next school board meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, December tenth, we'll have the regular school board meeting at five o'clock, but at six o'clock, we'll have the truth and taxation hearing. And if you can recall, that cannot start until six o'clock. And so we'll have a good full schedule on December tenth. And then we have scheduled a policy committee meeting on Friday, December thirteenth. And as a release to committees, I just want to update the school board, this is hot off the press. We had a meeting with the Science Department the other day, and there are minutes of that in your packet. But one of the items that we talked about at the end of that meeting was the importance of having our faculty develop comprehensive online syllabi so that students could look a semester in advance and find out what's going to happen in their class. And we do have a list of teachers, I'll just read them off. These people have agreed to develop a comprehensive syllabus before the beginning of the second semester. Anna Benson, Ashley Skabel in the Math Department, Teresa Keel in the Social Studies Department, Wendy Tonder in the Vocational Department, Sarah Goodall in the Language Arts Department, Katie Kennick in the Music Department, and Ann Holm in the Science Department. And Brooke Schultz is a QCOM coach, she'll also be assisting in this development along with the Director of Curriculum, Mrs. Ness.
Excellent.
So Merry Christmas, Dr. Rodriguez. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, finances, or donations first, Dan?
Sorry. Of course I have it. I always grab the microphone before I start talking. Okay, we have a resolution in Appendix A. Whereas according to Minnesota statutes, the Fairmont Area Schools Board of Education gratefully accepts the following donations or grants as identified: From Fairmont Firefighter Relief Association, one thousand three hundred fifty dollars for CER Elementary Basketball Program, and also five hundred dollars for the second grade field trip to Como Zoo. From Bruce and Jane Pyman, one hundred dollars for Fairmont Activities Account. And from Martin County Youth Foundation, nine hundred fifty dollars to CER for the After School Science Enrichment Prairie Ecology Bus Program. I move that we accept the donations as offered.
Second.
Any questions, any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, Dan?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks, Dan. And we'll move on to financial reports and bills, Chris?
I'll start with the wire transfer sheet. On November seventh, we received our first federal reimbursement for the year in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand dollars. On November twelfth, we received our first reimbursement for E-Rate, which is about half of our yearly total. That is a little over twenty thousand dollars. Moving on to the check register, I'm gonna jump to check number six-three-four-seven-two to Graffiti Corner for nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. That is for, which we purchased with our assigned for STEM dollars, it's for special ed students to work on their social skills in the mornings, selling coffee to teachers. Then I'm gonna jump to check number.
Quick question.
Yep.
Do they do that in the school, or do they travel? Okay.
Yes, it was also hot chocolate, that was one of the STEM innovation grants. Yes.
Very good, yeah.
Check number six-three-five-one-one to Tremco Waterproofing for forty-five thousand dollars. That is our final payment for the roof restoration on the PAC building and junior, senior high. And that's all I have for you.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
If there are no questions for Chris for the bills, I would then make a motion to approve the wire transfers for November eighth, November, yeah, November eighth, two thousand nineteen to November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, a payment of the November twelfth, two thousand nineteen bills.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Julie. We have no old business and new business, Julie, the Pi Hunt Grants?
Yes, we have, in your packet, you should have a list of the Pi Hunt Grant Proposals from the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. We received twenty-one proposals this year, which is a much lower number than we received in the past, just depending on the number of technology upgrades that have been implemented within the school district and with the classrooms, and that just kind of makes a difference. Because a lot of times, that's what is used, the grants are used for. So several teachers have already received grant dollars through the Gifted and Talented or STEM funding, so. The total of that Pi, the Partners in Education was able to donate was twenty-eight thousand dollars to this year's process. And the grants were totaled to twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty-seven. So that's how we did that. The excess funding will be used to pay the stipend for the high school musical, piano accompaniment, and that. So I'm not gonna list every grant that was fulfilled. Different people applied for different grants, but like it said, they were all fully funded because of that excess money. Is there any that anybody wants to bring attention to of anything? I don't have anything, but.
Well, there was extra money in the Hunt Fund. So what we decided to do was simply put the seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars that we did not spend in the Hunt Fund, we put that toward the STEM innovation grants.
Yeah, I see that as the last line, yeah.
We, there's plenty of money in that fund, and so as STEM innovation grants keep coming. And then the Hunt, or the Pi, the Pi Group, you're right, they paid for the piano accompaniment for the musical, and they put some additional money into the high school robotics program and the elementary maker space. And once again, kind of a focus on the whole science, technology, and engineering math areas.
Okay. So if there isn't any other questions on that, I will make a motion to approve the allocation of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Partners in Education Hunt Grants.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Julie. And personnel?
Okay, I'll do that as well then. There are several things here. We have an employee who has requested medical leave effective December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, and extending through January tenth, two thousand twenty, or per medical recommendation. There's also the termination of an employee, Pete Best, as supervisory aide, that was effective November eighth, two thousand nineteen. There was an employment for replacement, Loray Ram, Ram, as a supervisory aide, in effect of November eleventh, two thousand nineteen, at a salary of step one. The employment of Mark Washa as a custodian one, effective November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, a salary of step one. There's an employment of Megan Ost as a special education paraprofessional. That's effective November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at a salary of step one. Also, we set the summer rate for the student custodial pay at ten dollars and fifty cents an hour, effective January first, two thousand, two thousand twenty, so, okay? So I would make a motion to approve the following, or the pre-following, or the.
The items listed above.
The items, there you go, there, that's the way to say it. The items listed above that I mentioned before, so.
Second that.
Any questions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay.
So we are to board reports. Operations, Dan?
We had a very, I didn't touch the microphone that time. We had a very busy operations meeting on the fourteenth of November, we had a very robust agenda. The Superintendent briefed us on the status of the proposed Construction Trades Academy Building that would be built on the south side of the vocational wing. on the south side of the vocational wing. We've already, as we discussed in previous meetings, got a $100,000 donation from CHS. Also, a $25,000 donation for Kaler Automation toward this project. The superintendent and board member, Edmund, met with representatives of the Salvation Army to discuss the possibility of them building a new facility on high school property as well. Our business manager, Chris, presented a draft copy of the financial project model, which projects revenue and expenditures over the next five years. Additional information will be applied over the next few months, with further details on student enrollment coming, staffing and revenue. But there is a little bit of concern, looking out a few years, if our enrollment should, should drop, that we would need to, you know, really kind of buckle down on that and focus on that. The transportation and food service contracts are up next year, so we will have to go out for bids as the law complies, or as we comply with the law, I guess you could say. Also, Chris gave us financial information on the cost of activity workers at the school. And the superintendent directed the activities director to get the details on the current rate that all activity workers are being compensated, the people that work at, at games and such. So we will get back, I guess, some information on that in the future to be approved by us. Our building and grounds director, Tyler Garrison, briefed us on the need for additional tuck pointing that needs to be done at the high school. Figuring out reasons why we still have that leakage problem near the front entryway. And we have some leads on what that, what might be causing that. So the most recent contractor that worked on that, Tyler's in contact with them to hear their plans on how to get a permanent fix there. We talked about the roof repair projects and looked ahead to those in the future. And we also spent a fair amount of time on the long-term facilities maintenance plan, which is a 10-year plan as required by the state. And this plan, this past year included the renovation of the PAC. We're looking at future projects, ceiling and repainting of parking lots, tennis court, track, football bleachers. So there's a lot on the list there for the future. We have some district vehicles that are going to be reaching the end of their lifetime, that we can legally use them. So we're considering how to replace those in an order that's best financially for the district.
Are those vehicles that are, we use to transport our students? Because they could, they have an expiration time, correct?
Right. If you look on your notes, there, number eight...
I got a whole pile of papers.
Okay. Well, there's, you're right. If, we can use a vehicle to transport adults forever, but if we put students, other page, flip it over, number eight, it's 12 years. We can use vehicles for 12 years. We, the two oldest ones that we have, we have a 2001 Escape and a 2003 Escape that is used by our tech people, our, you know, our technology folks, they use that to transport back and forth and to transport equipment. And those are getting really close to the end. And if you can recall, if you look at the dates of when we purchased these, I think we purchased three of these the same year. Yeah, 2013 Chevy Suburban, a 2013 Ford Expedition, and a 2013 Dodge Caravan. If you can recall, we kind of spread that purchase out to each of the three vendors in town. And, but the idea is that as the 2001 and 2003 Escapes start costing us way too much money, which they are starting to nickel and dime us, that we may start transferring some of these other vehicles to them. And then maybe, don't buy three at one time, but...
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Space it out. So that's what, that's what we're looking for.
Because there's, it's just years. It's not like mileage, correct?
That's correct. You could have 100 miles on a vehicle, but if it's 12 years old, from the date of manufacturer, you cannot use it to transport students in Minnesota.
Okay.
So, yep.
The tech directors can use it because they don't have students with them, so.
Correct.
So we'll be looking at how to replace those. Handrail for door 17 at the elementary was talked about. State Fire Marshal paid a visit, and Tyler will be getting us a more detailed report on any improvements that we need to make. Also, radon testing will be going on during the month of January at both of our buildings. 259 different radon kits will be used. And then Tyler recommended Mark Washa to be the new custodian, which we approved here a few moments ago. So, yeah, we had a busy meeting.
Yeah, very good.
The other, the only other thing I'd like to just comment on, just because I can't help myself, but I really appreciate the enrollment reports. I know Dan mentioned that, that is, you know, it's something that we're always looking at in our, you know, because that is our funding, how many students we have. But I really feel that because we do keep a close eye on it, hopefully that will keep us from being blindsided from, you know, and Mary does a great job of doing that. And I know that you've been doing too, some research as to why our students are leaving or coming or whatever. But I just, I just want to say, I really do appreciate this document that we get on each board meeting to help us all be aware of, of our, you know, possibilities of enrollment and that.
And I'll point out that we have one of our faculty members with us tonight, Mr. Hurnus. And I met with, every month I meet with a couple of representatives of the Teachers' Association. And that was a topic that we talked about for about a half an hour. Because as we look down the road, two or three years from now, when those smaller elementary class sizes go into the high school, what we want to do is to, you know, have our high school faculty, and I know they're doing a great job, but to continue to, to be innovative and creative about what courses can we offer here to attract more students from the region to come. I did get a phone call today from the superintendent from United South Central, which is Wells. And they're part of the Southern Plains. And Keith Fleming and I worked together at Austin years ago. And he's a superintendent, but he's interested in sending some, his USC students over here in January for the automotive academy.
Wonderful.
And, and so we worked out a little deal that we could make that happen. But, so I appreciate the fact that our faculty are already looking at what they can do to, to encourage more kids to come, and what programs we can do to enhance.
Absolutely. And, you know, and then we don't have duplication as well. You know, if we can, you know, offer them for our students, and then like you said, if Wells can bring a few kids over, you know, Truman, Grenada, I mean, you know, and then like I said, we're being the good neighbor and helping all of our students, you know, regardless of what district they came from or where they come from, but we're helping all students.
And I have, you mentioned Truman. I have met with Lisa Schellam, their superintendent. And she's very interested in having the two-hour block classes either at the front end of our school day or the back end. So her Truman students could come either before school and be here for two hours, or at the end of the school day. And so as the new administrative team of the high school and the counselors start building the master schedule for next year, we'll be working closely with Truman to see what classes are those students interested in coming. And it may not just be vocational, we think vocational, but we have so many other classes that we have here that some of our smaller schools don't have.
Well, it, it just, what comes around goes around. Because back when I was in high school, many of our students in C-Lon that I was graduated from rode a bus. That was the afternoon they spent, they rode a bus, you know, at the end of their lunch period, drove the bus, or they didn't drive the bus, they rode the bus to the, but they went to the Vo-Tech classes. And I know when my, I had graduated, but my sister, she was able to get, I know one of the classes she took at the time was photography, because it wasn't, there wasn't anybody that could, could provide that. And so she took that class, I can't tell you what other class, I just know she took that one. But then she just rode the same bus, but was able to get, because she'd had all her, you know, required classes taken. And I mean, I just, I just think that's, we're using those resources and making it available for all students that, you know, to make us all be, you know, good, good neighbors for, for all students. So I just, I just think it's wonderful that we're recycling those ideas.
Well, it's, you know, our geography is kind of unique like that, in that we are about the biggest town in Minnesota that doesn't have college campus, you know, other than, you know, presentation, but like a community college or a different kind. So we have a lot, you know, we, we have an area where we can draw people in from. And it's a great idea that we're doing it. And I, and I hope that the, the city and, and some of the other entities around here kind of keep that on their radar too, to be able to make Fairmont this regional hub. Because the, just where we happen to land when everybody plopped down on the map is, is advantageous to us if we play our cards right.
Well, I said, we all, we all benefit from it, you know, because these students will be taking care of us when we're seniors and that. And they're going to be, you know, they're going to be the store owners. They're going to be the plumbers. They're going to be the housing builders. And, you know, I mean, they're just, you know, so we've got to help make them successful in the future. So that's what we have to do.
I agree. Good discussion. Another board, another board report, committee report?
Yep. The curriculum committee met with the science department, and all of the science teachers were there, along with principals Schmidt and Teague, and superintendent Ms. Brown was there, myself, Rufus and Mari. And the topic of discussion was the science, new science curriculum that the state is implementing, or science standards, I should say. And one of the things that the state is now shifting is when certain classes are taught in science. So now the state requires that earth science be taught in sixth grade, life science be taught in seventh grade, and physical science be taught in eighth grade. The state also requires that physics and chemistry, physics or chemistry be taught as one required class, a year in length, that also that we have one biology class required, and that we have one science elective class required. So then the question comes into, how do we sequence that? And while at the same time giving students the greatest opportunities and options for what they want to pursue and study in science. So it was decided that, for right now, the plan is that physics would be a ninth grade science class. You don't have to be in ninth grade to take it, but that's when it would be offered or highly recommended. Chemistry as a 10th grade class, once again, you don't have to take it, but it's highly recommended. And that, then 11th grade would be biology, or college in the school biology. Right now, biology is taught as a 10th grade class, as only an honors option. Now with it being moved to an 11th grade option, it will be offered as a college in the school biology class. In addition to, we'll still have college in the school chemistry, college in the school physics. And all of those classes, because they're very rigorous, we're highly recommending that students, prior to taking those classes, take the standard physics or standard chemistry. Again, it's up to the student, but that's the path that's being highly recommended. We're also offering college in the school anatomy and physiology. Right now, we have the electricity and magnetism elective. We might, we didn't talk about this, but we might continue to offer an earth systems elective. The, the point is that we, you have to have three credits of science to graduate. Two of those credits are predetermined as to which classes they need to be, and the other one is an elective. And so our purpose in scheduling in this, this sequence is that students will, by the time they graduate, have the credits that they need, but that they'll also have lots of options available to them. So I'm excited for it.
Oh, absolutely.
I think it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our students. There's so many options out there. And our science department is very excited and very willing to really work with the students in the electives that they're offering. And I think it's great. And we'll have more college in the school offerings, too.
It isn't a great, too, that we got the entire science department to agree unanimously on this plan that they put together.
Right.
So, pretty pleased. Took a while.
Yeah.
But...
It was, it was good.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it's a good change. Julie?
Yes. Well, the Southern Plains Educational Co-op Board met last night, the spec board. And we had a couple of things that come up. First thing we had was a guest presenter was very interesting, was Kendra Maddix, 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 I think is her name. And she was presented on telepractice. Now, we in the medical world, Rufus and I, Nicole is probably aware of that, and anybody else who's had to take advantage of it as well. But we use telemedicine, in which we use, we use a lot is Rochester back and forth to whether we need help, or that we need them to look in on cases and that, which they are just right there. And so then this is a telepractice, in which we had numbers, I didn't get the numbers on that, but how, what a savings it can be for our districts. Because we can, the teacher meets with the students by interactive, you know, they don't have to actually go to, to the sites. And so, and what's coming is that there's just such a shortage on what was used. And Kendra is a speech and language pathologist, and there really is a need for those. And they're really kind of hard to find people to, to provide that service. And so because we can do this, and they aren't actively doing it yet, she just presented on the possibility of, of doing it. But she showed us where the students could interact with her versus the computer and that. They just have to have the special computer to, to interact and that. It was just really interesting. And, I mean, she only sometimes goes to somebody's schools and spends 15 minutes, half an hour, but yet she may spend half an hour, 45 minutes driving either one way or even both ways. And, you know, can really open some time of her day. We do need to have somebody to, you know, make sure the students get to that, to the area that the, it's being set up to be done. But it was really interesting, the possibilities that can become for that. So it was really interesting. And I know, Joe, that they will be presenting to the superintendents of the Southern Plains Board too as well. So there was, we had some policies that will be, were first readings, and that we'll go through those for the next meeting. Approved the fire systems and inspection agreement. We approved the seniority list, assurance of compliance for the Minnesota Department of Education. We had some, oh, was a resolution for a donation, just like we have here. And the 2019, 2020 budget was also brought forth, so.
Julie, was that meeting held at the Arise Academy?
Oh, yes. Yes, it was. That was really nice. Well, just to find there, you know, how the, how to go. But it's really, I would, didn't have time because I had another commitment after the meeting, but I would like to have spent more time to just even explore just how it was. Because I haven't been in the building, except for we were midway through the construction, when we had to wear construction hats and that. So I'd be really interested to see the classrooms and stuff. But like I said, I was in a time commitment, and I, maybe they did offer a tour and that, but I wasn't able to do that. But, yeah, we were able to get, because as of Friday, the business office of Southern Plains moved to, as of last Friday, moved to the Arise Academy as well. So we will not have to have separate building for business office. So we'll save some money that way, too.
Well, thank you, Julie. Anybody else have anything?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is, the meeting is adjourned.